Good evening, everyone. I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. And I called order this June 21st meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council. Pursuant to the procedures and policy adopted by the City Council relative to virtual meetings, I've determined that it's not feasible for the City Council and I to meet together physically due to the safer home order. Also, council members are participating virtually. Council members will vote by roll call vote. A council member will be recognized, raise their hand, and state their vote. With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bundy.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
She may still be in breakout room.
Mayor Pro Tem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Here.
Thank you very much. We have everyone present tonight. Would you please join the City Council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Tonight's agenda of the City Council is comprised of two parts. The general agenda, which will begin with consideration of the annual fiscal year 2122 budget for the city of Winston-Salem and the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda have been unanimously approved by committee of the City Council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member so requests in which an item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13 and we will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda as well as videos of previous meetings are always available to the public online at the city's website and just select the city government menu and click on the watch meeting online option. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to pull from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion in seconds. Thank you. We'll do the roll call for the approval of the consent agenda. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bundy.
Aye.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. The consent agenda is approved. The next order of business is a public hearing will be conducted on the proposed budget. When this public hearing is called, persons who would like to speak will be called upon, at which time we request that you give your name and address for the record. And in order to give everyone a chance to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes. And if there are more than one of you representing one particular organization, I think it'd be best if you can consolidate your remarks together. After the hearing, from every person who wishes to speak, the public hearing will be closed. And we will also accept written comments on all public hearing items until 7:00 p.m. on June 22nd. That's tomorrow. Written comments may be sent to the city clerk's office at P.O. Box 2511, Winston-Salem 27102, or by email to S.A.N.D.R.A.R.K@cityofws.org. The written comments, if any, will be forwarded to the mayor and members of the council. And if desired, the appropriate council member, based on the written comments, can make a motion to reconsider the item at a subsequent meeting. Before we go into the public hearing on the budget, I would ask our budget director, Ms. Toni, if you would, to give us a brief summary of the budget as we're dealing with it tonight. Ms. Toni?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, and members of the council. I'll just give you a quick overview of the budget, kind of where we were and where we are currently, this being proposed. The budget, the original proposed budget was $530.9 million. That includes 381.8 for operations, 40.5 for debt service, and 110 for capital. The highlights of the budget, the original budget decreased the property tax rate at 1.5 cent, and I'll talk about finance committee changes in a second. It maintains core services to citizens. It meets the 14% reserve policy. It adds a diversity equity inclusion office, provides investments to our city employees by increasing the merit, average merit pay, increases the minimum wage to $15 an hour, provides additional 2% increase for public safety employees, and that's sworn officers and certified firefighters. It also adds 1.2 million investment from the general fund for community agencies and 1.6 million for community agencies from other funds like federal funds. The finance committee made some recommended changes. So they recommended to decrease the tax rate by an additional 1 cent. So the total proposed decrease for the budget is 2.5 cents from the current rate. That does impact our debt service fund and reduces the capacity by 25 million. The finance committee also recommended 1.3 million dollars for a crime prevention plan, and that money is taken out of our fund balance. And so you can see, the crime prevention plan is to increase the SOAR funding, which doubles the number of participants, crime prevention programs and conflict resolution for youth, a cure program, which is violence interrupters for 200,000, a recreation center program and a mentorship stipends, a gun buyback program, and pre-K initiative support for a long-term crime prevention strategy. So the total crime prevention plan is 1.35 million. And so this last chart just shows you where our property tax rate will be if it's proposed, if it's voted on tonight. It reduces the current rate by 2.5 cent. That gives us a property tax rate of 61.24 cents. And the addition of the crime prevention plan increases the budget to a total of 532.2 million dollars. Mayor, that ends my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Toni. Is there any questions, Ms. Toni, before we go to the public hearing? All right. Thank you. We will go to the public hearing on the budget. Again, please give your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. So Ms. Martin will call out the names as we go forward.
Velma Terry.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Velma Terry. I am a survivor of gun violence. My son was murdered February 14th, 2021. He's been gone four months and seven days. And I heard the young lady speak about the Youth Crime Watch, the conflict resolution, the budget on that. And I'm also with a program called GUIDE, Guiding Institute of Developmental and Education. And that's what we specialize in. Youth Crime Watch, all youth programs, conflict resolutions. And now I'm here on another plateau about gun violence. Educating the community about gun violence, the importance. I work in these communities where half of these events take place. And I'm here, I believe Nikita McDaniel is on here as well. She knows more about the Mother Against Violence program. And she started a movement. So there is needs for monies to go there so we can prevent these things or try to educate the community about gun violence. And that's it. And also, I have a parenting program called Divas, and we need to educate these parents as well about this. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Terry. Next speaker.
Nikita McDaniel.
Good evening, everyone. Can y'all hear me well?
Yes.
Ma'am. I wanted to start off this evening first, let me tell you where I live. I'm a resident of 3050 Bainbridge Drive here in the city in the 27105 zip code. I am here today to speak about the proposed changes to the budget, the general fund that will go towards violence interruption and prevention. I think 1.3 million dollars is a good start. However, I think I spoke to some of you, just to let you know, that that's just a good start. That money, we will probably likely need $5 million to have a comprehensive solution to ending gun violence, which includes Cure Violence. Cure Violence is a program that treats violence as a disease or illness. And it's going to cost us probably about $2 million, at least, to run that program. The money that has been proposed is money that would probably be able to cover four violence interrupters in our city. I want to speak a little bit on behalf of a group of women that we've been bringing together for about a month and a half. We have named ourselves the Winston-Salem Women's Gun Violence Prevention Team. And we got some ideas. We got some ideas around how we can get extra money that is not in the budget. We also are thinking, and I'm not sure this, so someone can correct me, but I haven't heard much talk about the American Rescue Plan funding, which is a huge opportunity for our city, carried down to us by our president, Joe Biden, and also supported by our governor. We would like to see these things actually happen in a community way or a community driven way because we recognize that the solutions, as we had our chief, Chief Thompson, to say last week in a press conference that she wanted community to stand up. Well, community is standing up and community is organized. I see other groups on here that are organizing around similar things. We stand in solidarity with them with regards to the money to end violence in our community, in particular gun violence. But we are here to offer olive branch to all of our elected officials. We know where their resources at, and if there is any opportunity for us to find some money in the American Rescue Plan, we'll be here to support that too. And on a final note, I would like to say that we are grateful that our elected officials are stepping up. But this is not just a job for one group of people. It's not just your job. It's not just community's job. We come from a wealthy community, and we have plenty of nonprofit organizations, including United Way of Forsyth County and all of our families.
Daniel, your time is up. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Please.
Ally Jones. Good evening. My name is Ally Jones, and I'm a new resident of the 27106. What's up, Mayor Pro Tem? All right. I'm here tonight representing the group Hate Out of Winston and standing in solidarity with the Winston-Salem DSA. I'd like to begin by thanking Councilmember Taylor for his support of Hate Out's push to increase funding for SOAR and Youth Build programs. And I'm here to insist you consider the full power of the city to impact residents through these opportunities if they are meaningfully funded. It is not going to notice that there is a substantial uptick in violence in the city of Winston, particularly in East Winston. And after a year of challenges with affordable housing, engaging in education, and finding work with a truly livable wage, it comes as no surprise. The majority of 2020 and a good deal of this year so far has been devastating for communities in need across the United States, and has been no different for the residents of our city within the city. I urge those of you whose words are most impacted by these dangers to listen to us instead of your voicemails during public comment, for it is your constituents who are suffering and for whom we are advocating. When you turn away from us, you turn away from them. The threat of violence is now more critical than ever to fully fund Youth Build in particular and the Department of Reintegration and Youth Development as a whole. $400,000 is a start, but that is all it is. When operating under the budget provided by the DOL, Youth Build received 1.5 million dollars, which is used to fund the achievement and training of 82 young people who had previously been unable to complete their education. It specifically allowed for the funding of a case manager, whose role is necessary to help participants overcome the obstacles that led to them dropping out of school to begin with, problems with transportation, housing, childcare, healthcare, food, and other basic necessities. While faith and Troy do an incredible job with the resources available, they are not trained case managers, and to expect them to perform the duties of someone with that experience while also administering programming is to do a disservice to them and all people served by their department. As a tutor with strong connections to our community, particularly the scholars of East Winston, I promise you that the dropout rate we have seen climb over the last five years since DOL funding was removed is going to be astronomical this year. In 2019, 568 students dropped out of WSFCS, and I'm terrified of what this year's data will reveal based on the experiences of my scholars and fellow servants of youth in our community. If the city is going to provide these programs, you need to operate in truly good faith. Underfunding this department to make the two programs share an amount of money insufficient for each will not lead to the opportunities we so desperately need to provide. Instead of investing in increased police presence in the form of G-Crew, it is time to invest in the people. Instead of relying on a sponsor to crime that provides no real path for absolution, it is time to provide avenues that prevent young people from interacting with the police at all. I've said it to you since my very first public comment, true change means funding prevention over reaction. True change is reducing the needs for programs like SOAR by increasing the funds for Youth Build to an amount that will change the lives of more than eight residents a year, with the opportunity to become productive citizens who can meet all of their basic needs and more with job skill training and employment. It is time to be real about what it means to prevent crime and care for all of our people.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Increase the funds for SOAR and Youth Build as a realistic amendment.
Next speaker.
Gillian Seacrest.
Hi, Gillian Seacrest, 27127 is my zip code. Hi, my name is Gillian Seacrest, co-chair of Winston-Salem DSA, core member of Housing Justice Now and in Coalition with FC Park, and in solidarity with Hate Out of Winston tonight. Community activists and groups in Winston-Salem have now been saddled with solving gun violence by both our city and county LEO leadership of law enforcement officer multiple times within the past month. Maybe if the community activists were heard, the issues would resolve. I would first like to highlight that healthcare disparity is extreme within our economically and racially segregated city. Funding for organizations like Unity Wellness Center can aid in bridging holistic healthcare needs to underserved and underfunded communities, providing not just the desperately needed physical care, but addressing the desperate need for mental healthcare as well. Addressing and working to heal individual and collective traumas within communities creates healthier communities. Healthier communities lead to less disparity. Less disparity leads to less violence. The equation has been reiterated again and again ad nauseam. Ad nauseam enough that we request to file the following list under things that the city has not listened to nor acted upon. One, affordable housing. We have still not heard a proposal to aid in increasing the pool of affordable housing. I know, ask the county, but hear me out. What if there was a coordinated approach? Maybe we could see some of the 55 million or untouched housing money from the 2018 block grant could remedy that issue. Additionally, we are still seeking a mobile mental health crisis intervention unit to ensure that our neighbors struggling with mental health issues can be treated with proper measures to enjoy their safety, to ensure their safety, dignity, and respect. And finally, our request for demilitarization. The DOD's 1033 program continues to provide excess Department of Defense equipment to municipal sheriff and police departments. End the militarization of our police by putting an end to the acquisition of military equipment for municipal use. The budget demands that have been made have been made time and time again. This isn't a new song. It's the same track on repeat. If you want the violence to subside, maybe listen to the activists. Increase the funding for SOAR and Youth Build more than the proposed increase to curtail the high risk of youth, high-risk youth and formerly incarcerated community members from falling into cycles of recidivism, violence, and poverty. Additionally, increase the projected funding for violence interrupters. If you are concerned about violence, then recognize this pivotal tool to avoid unnecessary escalations between community members and police. It's integral to bridge community with community in lieu of external entities that could exacerbate or harm parties involved while still perpetuating the same systemic violence that creates the conditions in the first place. Listen to the activists. Fix the material conditions. I yield my time.
Next speaker, please.
Emily Barnes.
Hi, my name is Emily Barnes, and I'm in area code 27105. And I am in solidarity with Triad Abolition Project. And although I'm not the only one speaking for TAP tonight, I am an individual who wants my individual voice heard. The reason why we join coalitions is because we're all individuals who don't have as much talking power as elected officials. This is how we communicate with the gravity of the issues we speak so passionately about. I want to address the increase in the WSPD budget. I find it odd that amid this budget of compromises, that the City Council still openly funds policing over community initiatives. City Council wants instead to move funds from the reserves for more crime prevention initiatives. And let me tell you, policing in this city has become territorial and already defines borders between the, quote, "good" and "bad neighborhoods." More police is not a solution to deeper community issues, and it never has been. Noted as WSPD's PR spokesperson and the $65,000 salary that could be invested in our communities, and instead is being used to make the WSPD look good in the news and for teen programs which serve as police recruitment efforts. This strategy by WSPD and by the city at large says a lot about the city's priorities, freely funding efforts to make themselves look better without doing better and without addressing the root causes of poverty by investing in preventative, community-based programs. This is especially important right now, and what we are doing for these programs to date isn't even close to enough. I also want to say that it's important for community members to feel as though they're heard. Public comment period during city council meetings is supposed to be a way for the public to have their voices heard on matters which directly affect them. Beyond not responding to TAP's comments, the current budget solidifies the city council's actions as they make budget decisions without considering public input. I can't tell you how exhausting it is for those in power here to act as though they know our problems better than we do. Community engagement means more than PR, ice cream with cops, and photo ops. And it means engaging the public as partners in the decision-making process. Finally, I urge you to stop doing the same things that we've always done. I urge you to defund WSPD and refund our communities. I yield my time.
Next speaker.
Sarah Hines.
Yes, my name is Sarah Hines. I live at the 27101 zip code, and I am speaking for Triad Abolition Project in solidarity with FC Park. Hello, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and city council members. We at Triad Abolition Project have monitored all city council general meetings as well as all budget workshops over the past fiscal year. And as you all know, we have spoken in all public sessions to demand that systems of policing, such as the Winston-Salem Police Department, reallocate funds into community resources that address root causes of poverty, racial discrimination, and violence prevention. Triad Abolition Project has shared over 50 public comments in the 2020-2021 fiscal year with a theme that acknowledges the budget is a moral document. In our experience in public sessions in our city, City Council has actively silenced, avoided, and attempted to diminish community voices demanding simply that the community's needs be met. In fact, Councilmember James Taylor held a rare public session in the Public Safety Committee meeting in June of 2020 to allow the community to share concerns about WSPD due to the overall climate at the time. The council promised during that meeting to move $1 million to social justice and anti-poverty initiatives. The reality over the course of the fiscal year is this. Number one, the Public Safety Committee made no attempt to follow up with Forsyth County Police Accountability and Reconciliation Coalition, FC Park. FC Park and TAP members, after we shared our presentation on research and attainable solutions to poverty and violence prevention, the Public Safety Committee did not allow public sessions again, therefore attempting to silence the community. Number three, the city did not advertise the public session for the 2021-2022 budget on any of its platforms. During the 2021-2022 fiscal year workshop, WSPD hired a new PR position for $65,000 a year, which was only reported by media and not included in any city budget documentation accessible to the public. Since that hire, WSPD's presence in media coverage has accelerated into normalized copaganda, much like the copaganda from Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. While the city has decided to move funds from the city's reserves into crime prevention initiatives, Winston-Salem Police Department's budget is not only set to increase by $2 million, but today's agenda also includes several items that expand policing and surveillance in our community, such as Item C1, which moves $5,000 from SOAR to another program even after advocates have consistently demanded more funding for SOAR. Item C2 expands the community policing unit via a lease for more space, which costs more and is
Hines, your time is up. Thank you.
Katie Morawski.
Hi, yes, my name's Katie Morawski. I live at 701 Magnolia Street, 27103. On Wednesday, June 16th, the WSPD Chief Thompson, Assistant Chief Weaver, and Lieutenant Golden held a press conference to address the community's concerns around the alarming increase in gun violence in the city. Chief Thompson said, "We can't do it alone. It's not a police problem. It's a community problem." She asked what investments others are willing to make to stop this violence. She has also recently stated if East Winston looked the same as Northwest Winston, then people would have more opportunity to feel like there's equality coming their way. Sheriff Bobby Kimber also recently admitted to the media that there are social issues that we have yet to address that bring about criminal issues, among those being poverty, illiteracy, and food deserts. Law enforcement, by their own admission, are only capable of reacting to crime, not preventing it. They contribute to the established suppression and violence against our most marginalized community members while doing nothing to address the root cause of harm, such as poverty, housing insecurity, food insecurity, lack of access to healthcare, transportation, education. All of these issues have been exacerbated by an unprecedented global pandemic. As gatekeepers of the funds for the city, these issues are your responsibilities to address and fund with our tax dollars as well as state and federal coronavirus relief funds. And yet, the budget for WSPD is set to increase by $2 million, with every officer getting 2% raise on top of a 2.5% quote merit adjustment. In addition to that, the American Rescue Relief Funds from the federal government are slated to be used for crime prevention, which means surveillance and more policing. I'd like to remind you all again that our city's budget is a moral document. And these concerned community members that have been engaging with y'all at the public session of every city council meeting for the entire fiscal year are demanding that policing and carceral systems of oppression be defunded so that our community can heal and flourish with more access to services that provide community-led resources, such as care, that are care-focused, such as public health, housing, food, and education. Please listen to us. Like, if you don't, it's going to be really bad for you. You know, reelection time. Yield my time.
Next speaker.
Miranda Jones.
Greetings, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of city council. As you already know, Hate Out script is the same as it has been, and we are also here in solidarity with many other groups, including the DSA, and particularly those engaged in direct community frontline work. We would also like to thank members of the council who have been instrumental in going beyond fancy speeches to actually finding ways to demonstrate what's important through the budget. Black lives matter through how you move our budget and not just your words. Hate Out's quest has always been about justice, justice for black people, justice for poor people, justice for marginalized people, justice for oppressed people. Justice is not just a holiday. I suggested our city move beyond the holiday that largely benefits its mainly white employees. How do you do that, you might ask? One of the first things you don't do is hire violence interrupters from Chicago and pay them $200,000 to do what my activist brother, Efren Guar Mohammed, and David Valada and others have been doing for years without pay. Have they not been instrumental in decreasing violence on the South Side? Have they not been directly engaged in peace walks in East Winston? There is funding for this under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. It is questionable that our council would seek to bring in an outside group to solve local problems. Just this past week, I spoke with Elder Reverend John Mendez, who explained that this work was done years ago without anyone coming from Chicago. This is not money well spent. Additionally, Hate Out continues to maintain that prevention is better that prevention is better than reaction. If the council is serious about addressing violence, it best indicates this and how it prioritizes this in this budget. $400,000 for one office for two programs is not enough. We've asked for 1.5 million a piece for both SOAR and U-Bill. Many of you will frown or ignore us outright, but you have the highest crime and poverty in your wars, those of you who are frowning or ignoring us. The question of how much goes to administrative costs is a fair one, though it also means that the folks working in the small offices deserve to be compensated. If the issue is oversight, well, the same could be said for many other areas in your budget. The answer simply isn't to provide an infinitesimal amount. We're talking about some of our most vulnerable populations. The same can be said for those facing mental health challenges. We ask that this be a consideration in your budget. We recognize that this city is part of a cohort that doesn't cost the city to analyze 911 call data over a three-year period of time. There's a problem with this data collection. Black people and poor people cannot rely on data collection when they aren't at the table. The underrepresentation in the data reeks of foul. We're demanding that a paid focus group that is intentional in including black and local mental health clinicians who are engaged in this analysis. That includes a myriad of black mental health clinicians as we are not a monolith. This should also include those who work in the field of developmental disabilities and substance use disorder. So I ask you, as an educator and an activist, to consider line upon line, precept upon precept, to consider the people of your wars as you make budgetary decisions. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Dan Bessie.
Thank you very much. I'm Dan Bessie, 978 Benjamin's Way, Winston-Salem, 27103. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem, and council members. I'm primarily here to thank you this evening for what I consider to be reality-based budgeting in the area of public safety. You have recognized that it is necessary to invest both in responding to public safety problems and violence on the streets and in addressing the root causes of poverty and inequity in our community. You have continued to include investments in both in the proposed budget. To portray that as an either-or choice is a false dilemma. It is essential to have a well-trained and well-led police department under sound policy guidelines in order to respond to public safety crises such as the ongoing epidemic of gun violence, both in our community and nationwide. You have wisely included a continued improvement in competitive salary and benefits for all staff and especially for public safety employees and fire and police. I was moved to calling this evening, when I had not initially planned to, by a traveling story on the NBC National News this evening, noting that there has been a 45% increase in retirements from police departments across the nation and an 18% increase in resignations. That is not sustainable. I would like to express my appreciation for the work of our well-led and well-trained public safety officers. And I would like to thank those speakers at the beginning of the public comment period who spoke up in favor of specific violence interruption and prevention programs in our community. And thank those who have noted that our programs, such as SOAR and other reentry programs, as well as investments in housing and economic opportunity in neighborhoods throughout our community, including economically challenged neighborhoods, are equally essential and must be addressed. This is not an either-or situation. It is necessarily a plus-and solution. Please continue to follow that path. I expect that you will, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Bessie. I understand that as all the individuals signed up for public comment on the budget, public hearing on the budget, I'll therefore close the public hearing for the budget. Now go to Item G2.
Item G2, annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2021-2022.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize the Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mayor Protem Adams, for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I move to approve the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2021-2022, which sets the tax rate at 61.24 cents per $100 of assessed value and a tax rate of nine cents per $100 of assessed value for property owners within the downtown Winston-Salem Business Improvement District.
Thank you. Sir, second.
Second.
Thank you. Second. Councilmember Clark.
Let me unmute. Thank you, Mayor. I do have a statement I would like to read, and I will read it in its entirety and hopefully I can get this in my five minutes. For only the second time in 20 years, I will not be voting for the budget. I have experienced an increasing sense of frustration over the budget and the 11% tax increase embedded in this budget. It's a straw that has broken the camel's back. I had not intended to make the next statement because I didn't realize I would need to. But I am very disappointed in the staff and the city manager that they don't have the courage to actually tell the citizens that the budget has an 11% tax increase in it. I'll start with COVID in 2020. COVID disrupted the city government just like it did everything else. The city has a social contract with our citizens and our employees. With our citizens, it's the old adage of fear- I mean, excuse me, with our employees, it's the old adage of fear days work for fear days wage. The city has honored that commitment during COVID. No one was laid off. Everyone was paid. The same cannot be said of our social contract with our citizens. Due to COVID, we were not able to provide certain services, and I'll put bulky item pickup and pools as two examples of services that were closed and others were reduced. This is not an indictment of what we did. It is just the reality of COVID. However, at the same time, we still expected our citizens to pay their taxes in full, and they did. I did not receive a single call from a citizen concerned about or complaining about paying the same tax for reduced services. Now that COVID is over, we are rewarding our citizens with an 11% tax increase. Why? This council cannot make the difficult decision of stop spending when we run out of money. We do it with our own money. Why can't we do it here? And I'm not just one to complain, but would like to offer specific suggestions on how we can do our job. There will be more in the future. I have been a vocal critic of the bus system for many years and continue to believe it is one of the worst-run services the city offers. For those who use the buses, and it's about 2% of the population, they are vital and they are needed to get folks to and from work and other places. I have often wondered why I am the lone voice of dissent when it comes to public transportation. As a businessperson, I measure success differently, I guess. I think the purpose of the bus system is to move people around Winston-Salem. It appears that the council and city staff measure the success of the bus system by how many buses are running. These are not the opposite sides of the same coin. It is the difference between measuring effort versus output. The information we received from the staff showed ridership over a 20-year period. We could go back further with additional data, but there will be no change in it. We have been experiencing a steady decline in ridership for a long, long time. When you consider that we have added evening, weekends, and additional routes, the picture is even bleaker. To put it very, very bluntly, we are spending more money in the history of the bus system and moving the fewest people we ever have. My poster child is Route 100. It averages eight riders per day. That's four people, folks. People ride it someplace and take it back. It costs us $438,000. Do the math. It sounds absurd, but you could rent them a nice car, pay the gas lane, the upkeep, the insurance, and still probably put $300,000 in the bank. Mr. Monday, how much money are you looking for for the theater allowance? I said last year I would not support a budget that had Route 100 in it, and I will honor that commitment tonight. And that's just the first of many problems, I think, of the transportation system. Look at Route 102. It averages seven people a day. We got to do better. And with that, I will close.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other comments or questions? Mayor Protem Adams.
One thing, Councilmember Clark, a couple of things he's clear on and that has been, he didn't vote for the budget last year, and he's not voting for it this year. But, let me finish. I admire your passion, Councilmember Clark. But just like some of our people said earlier, the speakers, we talk the talk, but we don't walk the walk. And the things that, like I told you before in finance meeting, that you seem to address as to the root cause of the problem of the budget or whatever, it circles around basically the poverty and the blight and the lack of employment and the lack of employees and others wanting to pay a livable wage and healthcare and pre-K. You know, I have no problem with your commentary because I'm going to have a little bit of mind right now. As the speaker said, until this town with all this money that has been going on, like I spoke about on WXII for decades and hundreds of years, and divided the city, and transportation is a disparity, like food and healthcare, and our segregated and resegregated school system that we didn't do, which has caused a problem for most people that look like me and poor people. So with this budget, and we'll have our discussion online about how all this went down just now, Mr. Clark. With this budget, as Mr. Bessie said, it's a plus or an aim. It doesn't mean, and you as a businessman should know, it does not mean yet a tax rate, yeah, you, yeah, 11%, I know, I know. But the cost of living goes up. And just like what the state is voting on a budget down there, that we got all this excess rainy day money. And the only reason that money is because they decreased the taxes and made some of us we pay more. But I can tell you this. I will continue to stand for whatever is needed for me and my community, and I will fight for it. And if I have to go head-to-head with anybody about what is right and just and what we've done in this city, I will. Because not just the data, the history speaks for itself. It doesn't mean that we're not going to go back and look at the buses, Councilmember Clark. It doesn't mean that we won't do some other things to be better with this year. We just came, we came out of a recession that took us 10 years, and then we went into a pandemic. The people that probably worry about the most about their taxes, yeah, it might be working people, but I'm sure it's the people with the trust buzz and the stock and all that other good stuff. So I'm going to support this budget, but I'm going to make sure that in this budget and that ARP money, that the least of us are taken care of. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We do have a motion and a second to approve the budget. We'll go to roll call. A yes vote approves the budget. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
No.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Recipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes seven to one to approve the budget. Item G3.
Item G3, project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2021-2022.
Recognize, Councilmember Clark.
I thought Ms. Adams was making the motions.
I understand she was going to do the G2, that you would do the rest.
That is correct.
Okay, well, let me find them. Bear with me. I'll move approval of G of the next one.
It hurts your heart. I know.
Project Budget Ordinance is moved approval by Councilmember Clark. Second. Any discussion of Item G3, the project budget ordinance? If not, we'll go to a roll call. Yes votes approves project budget ordinance for 21-22. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Recipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Item G4.
Item G4, motion to excuse Councilmember Taylor from voting on Items G5 and G6.
This is due to, these items deal with the city's advertising budget. And of course, Councilmember Taylor owns the Winston-Salem Chronicle and what would be a conflict of interest. So the motion here to excuse Councilmember Taylor.
I move- Is Councilmember Taylor from voting on Items G5 and G6.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. A yes vote will excuse Councilmember Taylor from voting on Items G5 and G6. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Recipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor will abstain from this vote. Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, you're excused from voting on Items 5 and 6. Councilmember Clark, I'd entertain a motion for both 5 and 6 together. If you-
I will move a motion on G5, which is the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem and for advertising fund. And G6, which is the project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem for the fiscal year, also for the advertising.
Thank you.
Burke.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions? All right, thank you. A yes approves Item 5 and 6, which is the advertising budgets for the city. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Recipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Motion passes seven in favor and one excused from voting. Thank you. Item G7.
Item G7, motion to excuse Councilmember Burke from voting on Item G8.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Burke from voting on G8 to a potential conflict with a family member.
So move.
Thank you. Thank you. So a yes vote will excuse Councilmember Burke from voting on Item G8. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Recipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Thank you. Of course, Councilmember Burke would abstain on this. Item G eight, excuse the G nine. Excuse the G eight, excuse me.
Item G eight, project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. For fiscal year 2021, 2022, federal housing funds.
Councilmember Clark.
Move approval of G ten?
Oh.
Or, excuse me, which one?
G eight. G eight, Councilmember.
Oh, excuse me, I will move approval of G eight, which is the budget ordinance for the, um, federal housing fund, excuse me.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McIntosh. Uh, a yes vote approves the, uh, uh, project budgets relative to federal housing funds. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Burke is excused. Uh, the motion passes seven in favor and one excused, thank you. Item, uh, G nine.
Item G nine, resolution approving the capital plan for fiscal year 2021, 2022 through 2026, 2027. As a financial planning guide.
Councilmember Clark.
Move approval of G nine, which is the capital.
Second.
Uh, Councilmember Sipio, any discussion? All right, a yes, a yes vote approves the capital plan for fiscal year as planning, uh, 2021 through 26 as a financial planning guide. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
And that is unanimous, thank you. Item G ten.
Item G ten, resolution approving pay for eligible employees. Amending Article One of the city of Winston-Salem Personnel Resolution. To expand, to expand grievous hearing options for city employees. And removing COVID-related delay, mayor adjusted for the amending Article Two. Of the city of Winston-Salem Personnel Resolution to add and delete position classifications. Adjusting pay plan for mar- market parity and increasing the minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour. And amending Article Three of the city code of Winston-Salem Personnel Resolution to designate June nineteen. As the recognition date for June.
Councilmember Clark.
Move approval of G ten?
Second, Burke.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Any discussion of G ten? A yes vote approves this, uh, resolution relative to personnel matters. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Eleven, resolution approving fiscal year 2021, 2022. Operating memorandum between the city of Winston-Salem and the Risk Acceptance Management Corporation.
Councilmember Clark.
Uh, uh, move approval of G eleven, which is agreement between the city of Winston-Salem and RAM Code.
Second.
Thank you, motion is second, any discussion of this? A yes vote approves the operating agreement with the city and RAM Code. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you, that is unanimous. Councilmembers, uh, without objection, item G twelve, uh, we've been asked to continue that until August the second meeting. So without objection, that item will be continued to August second. Any objection? Thank you. Item G thirteen.
Item G thirteen, public hearing on a petition to close and abandon a portion of Park Avenue. And that is to all persons interested in the closing thereof, petition of Salem congregation.
Thank you, uh, this is a public hearing, as anyone, no one has signed up to be heard on that, so I will close the public hearing. And this did, uh, come, uh, from the Public Court Committee, so I'd recognize Councilmember McIntosh.
Motion approved G thirteen.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion on that item? All right, thank you, uh, a yes vote, uh, will, uh, close this, uh, portion of Park Avenue. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor. Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you, that is unanimous. Item G fourteen.
Item G fourteen, public hearing on amendment, chapter ten, Article, Article Five. Division one and title Housing Code of the Code of the City of Winston-Salem. Recommended by Community Development Housing and General Government Committee.
Thank you, before we do the public hearing, uh, city attorney Angela Carmen is gonna give just a brief summary of what this action does.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem Adams and council members. What you have before you is an ordinance amending the Minimum Housing Code. To bring it in compliance with the changes made to chapter one sixty D of the general statutes. Briefly, the changes will, uh, revise the type of orders issued under the Minimum Housing Code. In particular, the repair or vacate and close order will be changed to a repair order. Also, the item will allow council to, city council. To waive or reduce a demolition assessment for affordable housing purposes. It also provides or makes clear that a, an appeal hearing. Before the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi judicial proceeding. And then there are some other minor changes to bring it in compliance with the general statute one sixty D. And that's, uh, basically a description of the ordinance amendment. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for, uh, Attorney Carmen? All right, seeing one, uh, this did, uh, come from the, uh, Housing General Government Committee, Mayor Protem Adams. I would recognize you for a motion if you're ready.
Yes, uh, I would move that we approve, uh, chapter ten, Article Five. Of Entitled Housing Code of the Code of the City of Winston-Salem. As noted by the city attorney.
Thank you.
Second.
Mayor, do you have anyone sign up for the public hearing, I'm sorry?
Oh, thank you. We did not have one sign up for public hearing, I will clo- officially close the public hearing, thank you, Ms. Carmen. So we do have a motion and a second to approve this change, uh, any discussion? Thank you, a, a yes vote will amend chapter ten of the, of the housing code. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you, that is unanimous. Uh, then item G fifteen.
Item G fifteen, public hearing on, amending chapter ten, Article Five, Division Two. Entitled vacant housing building and structure code of the Code of the City of Winston-Salem. Recommended by Community Development Housing and General Government Committee.
Thank you, um, Ms. Carmen, would you give us just a very brief summary of this one as well?
Yes, um, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem Adams and city council members. This change to the vacant non-residential structure and building code. Again, is being driven by the changes to one sixty D, one sixty D of the general statutes. Briefly, the changes are basically to indicate again that the hearing. Uh, appeal hearing before the zoning board of adjustment is quasi judicial. There's also a change, just like the Minimum Housing Code, that allows council to, uh, reduce away. A demolition assessment for affordable housing purposes. And then there's some other minor changes, I'll be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Any questions, uh, Attorney Carmen? Seeing one, uh, no one has signed up to be heard on the public hearing, therefore I will close the public hearing and would entertain a motion from, uh, Mayor Protem Adams.
Mayor, members of the council, I move that we approve, uh, the amendment of chapter ten, Article Five, Division Two. Uh, on the vacant non-residential building and structure code, the code of the city of Winston.
Thank you, there's a second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McIntosh, any further discussion? Yes vote approves this amendment to, uh, uh, chapter ten of the regarding vacant non-residential buildings and structure. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor. Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
And that is unanimous, thank you. Item G sixteen.
Item G sixteen, Mayor Jones' recommendations for reappointment to the Utilities Commission. Randall S. Tuttle, Chairman, term expiring June twenty twenty-three. Thomas Griffin, term expiring June twenty twenty-six.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Thank you, a yes vote approves these two individuals to the Utilities Commission. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Uh, G seventeen.
Item G seventeen, Mayor Jones' recommendation for reappointment to the triad municipal ABC Board. Susie Fielders, term expiring June twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second, Burke.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Burke. Um, this, uh, a yes vote on this approves Ms. Fielders for a reappointment. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor. Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you, that's unanimous. G eighteen.
Item G eighteen, Mayor Jones' recommendation for reappointment to the City's Review Board. Jackie Perkins, term expiring April twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion?
So move, Larson.
Second, Sipio.
Thank you, any discussion? All right, so, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you, that is unanimous. G nineteen.
Item G nineteen, Mayor Jones' recommendation for reappointment to the Community Sustainability Program Committee. Denise Terry, East Ward, term expiring May twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve. Second, Burke.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Any discussion? All right. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you, that is unanimous. Um, G twenty.
Item G twenty, Mayor Jones' recommendation for reappointment to the Community Sustainability Program Committee. Jordan Brewster, staffed as board, term expiring May twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Move. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Aye.
Councilmember Sipio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you, that is unanimous. G twenty-one.
Item G twenty-one, public comment period.
This is the time, uh, once per month that the city council sets aside thirty minutes to, uh, invite citizens to address it on matters that are germane to city government. But ask speakers to, um, state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Ms. Martin will call the names.
I'm sorry, did, did she call my name, I, I couldn't hear. Good evening, my name is Celine Johnson, ZIP code two seven one oh three. I am here representing hate out of Winston and more than one hundred. Local professionals to work in the fields of mental health, intellectual and developmental disabilities. And substance use disorders. My comments this evening are a follow-up to the RTI International Presentation on nine one one calls for service data. From the May twenty twenty-one Public Safety Committee meeting. Firstly, RTI reported that they have analyzed nine one one call data from September twenty seventeen through August twenty twenty. Of those nearly six hundred thousand calls, they reported that just nine thousand four hundred and fifty-five. Less than two percent were identified as having a mental health component. During the period being used for data analysis, the city did not have an adequate tracking or coding system for dispatchers to identify all mental health related calls. Thus, RTI stated explicitly that these data are an underrepresentation of the number of mental health related calls. It is clear that these data are indeed an underrepresentation. For example, researchers have found that six to ten percent of all police contacts in the U.S. Involve persons with serious mental illnesses. And estimates on the prevalence of serious mental illness in jails is at fourteen point five percent for men and thirty-one percent for women. Indicating that people with serious mental illness are overrepresented in jails and prisons. Also, estimates are, as you've heard, at least twenty-five to fifty percent of people fatally shot by police have a serious mental illness. We question how data which clearly underrepresent the volume of calls with a mental health component can be reliably used to inform decisions. Regarding Winston-Salem's Mental Health Response Pilot Program. And we ask, do these data include other nonviolent and noncriminal calls such as substance use disorder? Intellectual developmental disability related behavioral crises? Well checks, homelessness and domestic disputes that would be more appropriately addressed by law, non-law enforcement professionals? Secondly, RTI reported that their analysis would include focus groups. Thus far, the only data we've seen from focus groups have been from one focus group with Winston-Salem police officers. We implore RTI to engage a focus group of local mental health, developmental disability and substance use disorder professionals. We have more than one hundred local professionals who are engaged in mental health services within our local community who have expertise that should be part of RTI's analysis and recommendations. When will mental health professionals' voices be included? We want to reiterate, one, we strongly oppose a solely coresponder program for the city of Winston-Salem. Two, it is imperative to include mental health professionals in focus groups. And recommendations regarding our city's mental health response. And three, the public needs more information and more transparency from our city officials. Regarding how Winston-Salem will make these critically important decisions that affect many of our most vulnerable citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, next speaker.
Sarah Lee. Sarah. Sarah Lee. Ms. Lee, if you can hear us, you're on mute, there you go.
Hey. Yes, good evening, uh, first timer here, so I apologize, uh. Good evening, Mayor, uh, Joints and, uh, Mayor Protem and council members. I wasn't able to log in initially. To voice my concerns about the budget. But it, I know it's probably too late now, but here's my thought. With taxes going, uh, rising. We have just, uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, opened up an office of diversity, equity. And inclusion, which will be hiring, uh, four people for that particular, those particular positions. If I'm not mistaken, there are already, uh, state and federal laws. That deal with, uh, situations, uh, in which minorities or anyone. Uh, cannot be discriminated against. I think it's an awful idea. Equity, I am against, equality, I am for. Equity means the same outcome. Equality means the opportunity through your merit to achieve. And it seems to me that it's insulting to minorities. To think that they are unable to compete. And as long as people, whoever they are, are put in a box as victims. Then things will not change. And so I am totally opposed, I don't know what the salary is going to be for, uh, these positions. But, uh, I, I think it's, uh. A bad, a really bad idea. And I don't know if it's virtue signaling, uh, signaling or what the impetus was. But anyway, I'm, I'm here to, to voice my concern about it. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, next speaker.
Mia Sadler. Hey, this is Mia Sadler. I live in two seven one oh three, ZIP code, I use names and pronouns. Uh, first of all, Councilmember Clark, it's absolutely reprehensible to argue that a city doesn't need a public transportation service. It doesn't matter how few people use it, they're still using it and they need it to exist in the city. Anyway, I'm gonna finish Sarah Heinz's comment as she was cut off. If you recall, her comment emphasized how the city has silenced community organizations such as Trident Abolition Project and for South County Police Accountability and Reallocation Coalition, and funneled thousands of dollars into PR budgets. WSPD has a meaty PR budget, so let's get it started. So she said, as we left off, in the budget amendments, there's over a one million dollars for reserves going into crime prevention plans, which many of them mirror the ideas shared by community advocates. But the increase in pay for police officers, as well as the steady increase in the Winston-Salem Police Department budget, will continue to threaten our community with policing harms, incarceration, and systemic racism. Basically, funneling more money into law enforcement budgets does not keep communities safe. Militarized law enforcement does not keep communities safe. Communities with a wealth of material resources keep communities safe. We demand, and we will continue demanding, that you listen to the community, but also end the work of silencing and erasing voices within it by strengthening city PR that controls the media. Our city's budget is a moral document that sheds a crucial light on its leaders' priorities. And it's clear that for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget, it continues to prioritize policing over providing care to heal the community. We want a city where our community's needs are met with more resources, not with punishment and surveillance. And yes, we do need equity. We absolutely need equity, not equality. Equity. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. That is all the speakers who signed up for our public comment period, so therefore I will close the public comment period. Councilmembers, we do have a need for a very brief closed session, and I believe Mayor Pro Tim Adams is prepared to make a motion.
Unmuted. Wait a minute.
We hear you.
I'm working on it. Uh, I moved at the Winston-Salem City Council going to closed session pursuant to one NCGS one four three dash three one eight, uh, one one eight five to provide instructions to staff in negotiating the purchase price of other material and other material contract terms for the purchase of properties owned by Old Salem Incorporated located at zero Walnut Street, five oh six Walnut Street, five ten Walnut Street, eight ten South Poplar Street, and nine zero six South Marshall Street for affordable housing. And two, uh, NCGS one four three dash three one eight, one one eight three to consult with and provide direction to the city attorney and to provide, uh, protect the attorney-client brand.
Is there a second?
Second, Monday.
Thank you, Councilman Monday. Yes, folks, we'll approve, uh, the city council on our going into closed session. Councilor Larson?
Yes.
For Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Monday?
Aye.
Councilor Sipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilor Burke?
Yes.
That's unanimous. The city council will now go into a closed session.
The recording has stopped.
What's the motion?
To close session, to close the closed session.
Second.
Alan, you're on mute.
You're on mute there.
Mr. Mayor, where's Mr. Mayor?
Are we taking him?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
The, uh, we have a motion and a second to end the closed session. All those in favor of ending closed session, please say aye.
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 Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn. Well, before we do that, let me just say to the public, this is probably our last virtual meeting. When we come back on August the 2nd, we will be meeting in person here in the council chamber. So I know it's going to be good to be back in person, from my standpoint at least anyway. And appreciate everybody working with us and thank the staff for making this go as seamless as, uh, as possible over these years, this year. So now I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So thank you. All those in favor of his adjourning, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed to adjourned? Good, we are adjourned. See you in August.